We wanted to make sure that there were some questions that we wanted to make sure that everybody felt.
Okay, we are on the air. We've got our council work session. First up.
Scott.
Scott.
Can you help me?
Library District Task Force.
Hi, I'm Katie Noel, the library director, and before I introduce our guest, I just want to say our event on Sunday was fantastic.
It was so fun. Can you get closer to the mic?
It was a great event. I didn't see Kathy, but I did see Lisa, Angel, Wilda, Anne. It was, I was at the city information booth, so I guess I would see most of you, but it was so good. People are so excited about it. They're excited about the library, but they were just excited that this program was going on, and so many people were involved, even though it was a very hot day. They, everybody that I saw truly enjoyed it, and so, thank you. I thought it was a great event, and I was very proud to be wearing my buttercream shirt.
Is that the official color?
It was banana cream.
Oh, banana cream.
Banana cream.
I was close.
You were close.
So.
I thought they were University of Michigan colors. Maze and blue, we call it.
So, so thank you for that. That was, that was wonderful. With me tonight is Catherine Cole and Greg Williams. Catherine is the, I don't want to say new manager of the Link, but still the network, library network, and Greg is the semi-new deputy director of business and community.
Services.
Services? Okay. I was gonna say affairs, so I'm like, oh, wait a minute, no. So, anyway, we, a couple, last year, we had the Gladstone Library, some people from there, they were trying to get past. We had to agree to have them be able to change the IGA to become a county library. We did that, and during this whole process, many of the libraries had questions, concerns, and not just libraries, council citizens of where we are, where we're going. What is our governance? What is our funding? What are our services? How do we move forward and get what people in our district want? So, the county came up with, we need to do a new, just a task force to try and get information from our citizens on what is needed in our district, and this is what they're here to talk about, the task force that is being formed.
Thank you, Katie. That was very well done.
Thank you, Katie.
Good afternoon, councillors. Thank you very much for having us. We're happy to be here. I will, I was planning to just give a brief overview, just kind of repeating what Katie said, just to give you a little more context of how this task force came about, and then open it up to questions that you may have or concerns that you may have, if that works for everybody. Okay. So, as Katie said, in October of 2017, Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone entered into a settlement agreement. There was some pending litigation between both parties surrounding the construction of a new library to service both the Gladstone and the Oak Lodge service areas. And when the district first passed, the original intent was that the City of Gladstone would build a single facility that would serve both those service areas, and for a variety of reasons, that those plans did not come to fruition, became the subject of litigation, and eventually, the litigation was settled, and the county agreed to build and operate two new library facilities. One located in the City of Gladstone, on the site of the current Gladstone City Hall, and one located somewhere within the Oak Lodge service area, with a final location to be determined after a robust public engagement process. While we were, while the county and the City of Gladstone were discussing that settlement agreement, it became, we realized we needed to change, make some amendments to the intergovernmental agreement, the library district master intergovernmental agreement. And when those discussions first started happening about what changes might be necessary to facilitate the settlement agreement, there were many stakeholders who came forward and had some concerns about, well, if you're gonna change this, you know, we might not want that change, we have questions about how this is all gonna work. And at the time, our Board of County Commissioners directed staff to form a task force to kind of address some of these issues. We looked at the, we looked at the idea of having a task force for a little bit. We consulted with our library directors. We consulted with our citizen advisory group, the Library District Advisory Committee, on the best way to go forward. And eventually, we decided that probably the best way to do forward, to go forward was to create two task forces, and so, we colloquially called them the Little Task Force and the Big Task Force. And the Little Task Force met first, excuse me, their charge was simply to determine the minimum changes necessary to the Library District intergovernmental agreement in order to facilitate the construction of a new Gladstone and a new Oak Lodge library. And so, that group had representatives from the City of Gladstone, from the county, from our district advisory committee, we had independent citizen member of that, and that group took a very focused look at the IGA and figured out what would be necessary to, minimum changes needed to move that construction project forward. That was when we came to every city council, and we came to your city council and heard some, heard some feedback. At the same time, we just, we knew that based on all that feedback and based on the questions that had been asked, we also wanted to have another task force, and that one, we were calling the Big Task Force. And so, we delayed having that task force meet until we were able to get the Little Task Force and its work done, and the goal behind the Big Task Force was to address some of these larger systemic holistic issues and concerns that various stakeholders had, had brought up. So, once we were done with the Little Task Force, we worked again very closely with our library directors, very closely with our district advisory committee to kind of figure out how such a task force might work, what it might look at, how it might proceed, and, well, it's been, it took a while to get that all hammered out. Yeah. So, eventually, it took about six or eight months to get that all worked out. We took our proposal, which had been discussed with library directors, it had been blessed by the Library District Advisory Committee, we took that proposal to our Board of County Commissioners, who approved it. And so, now, that's the proposal, which I believe Katie shared with you as part of your packet. We are in the process now of just kind of going around to individual cities, answering questions, doing some work behind the scenes to figure out exactly how we're gonna, you know, what we're gonna do to manage this process going forward, make sure we have a good process so that we can have the, you know, kind of a robust conversation, but have it proceed as smoothly and as expeditiously as possible. So, with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that's, that's good for now, and I'm curious to hear what questions you have.
Well, I actually do want to, we, the way it was set up, there in the packet, you will see they have a breakdown of the different sub, well, the subcommittees and the main task force. The main task force is going to, we would like to have Anne, the city manager, be on that, and myself. Anne would be the voting person, I would be the non-voting, and I think I'm gonna end up being on most of the subcommittees as the non-voter. And we will need to find three people to serve on those three subcommittees. Shane Abma has indicated an interest in serving on the finance one, so if, if, if I can go and ask him to do that, I would love to move forward with that. And then, we just need to find someone for the governance. What was the other one? The services?
Services, funding, and governance, yes.
So, we will need.
Services, funding?
Funding and governance, and, and I should have gone a little bit with the.
Services.
Services.
No, I'm sorry, those are three. Yes, those are, those are three separate subcommittees.
Services, funding, and governance.
So Shane wants to work on funding?
Yes.
So. Mostly, we'd like Shane to work on funding.
Yes.
We needed some help, and we talked to him about it, and he was willing to if it were for you.
We'll turn him into a finances person.
Thank you.
Yes.
And to, oh, did you have a question? I don't want to interrupt.
No, I was just gonna say, the services one might lend itself well to a library board member being a rep on it. The governance, I don't know, maybe we want some, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think electives can serve.
Yeah, right. They, they did decide electives would not be serving. They did present this to the city managers on July 1st at their meeting, their monthly meeting, and they, I understand, it was kind of a robust discussion at times, yeah. They were, they asked a lot of questions and are behind it, moving forward. Since we're gonna have all these meetings and subcommittees, and then they'll meet and come back, each subcommittee will come back to the main, the large main task force, go back if there's any suggestions from that one, and I believe the way the schedule is set up is, it's gonna be one subcommittee will meet, come up with its recommendations, go to the main task force, then the second one will meet, then the third one, so that they're not all three meeting at the, around the same time, but that each area is taken care of, decided, this is the recommendation, and then move on to the next area.
So what I'm hearing is maybe we could ask Shane if he'd be interested in the district governance, governance.
Governance says. I told him he could do them all, but he kinda turned me down on that one. But, yeah, I can.
Thanks for checking.
Yeah, no, no, so, he, he did speak about the funding, and I can ask him, again, he's had, you know, I haven't hit him up for this in, you know, months, so, but that also, I feel he would be very good on any or all, but, you know, I hope he's not watching.
So, I'm sorry if I'm not remembering in the material, who, so who is going to be actually, will, will we recommend the folks for our, you know, our contingent of each of these, or what does that look like?
It's up to you. So for the primary seat, it's me, unless, it needs to be somebody from the city.
For these three?
So, for the other three, if you would like to make a recommendation, if you have names, we'd love it, and that would be great. We can have you do interviews, or you can simply name someone, or if you would prefer staff to speak with individuals, we can do that. But we have not identified anyone as the governance person. If we can't identify anyone, then you are looking at them again.
Well, I mean, I definitely think somebody from the library board is a, is a great, is a great, I mean, and, you know, I can't name anybody because that's, they need to volunteer for that, I think, but I do think that's a good idea, and I also think that we've got some, you know, former local elected officials who might have sort of an interest in the governance.
It's a good thought.
And we'd be happy to reach out to a few of those. If you want to email me names of people that you think might be willing to serve, we can reach out to them and just see if they'd be willing to take this on.
What? Very succinctly, what's the main issue they're trying to solve for, and what's the expected outcome? I don't mean specifically the outcome, but what's the main issue they're trying to solve for?
I, no, go ahead.
I don't know if, I don't know if at this point, there is a main issue identified. From my understanding is, there have been many issues addressed, and it's a chance for everyone to come together and identify what their main issue is. I don't know if you.
I would say the ones that we've heard more frequently than others, funding is definitely one of them. So, in your packet, I believe that was included, the letter from the library directors that was included there, so the library directors, back in 2018, when this was all happening, identified funding, got the sustainability and the availability of district funding as one of the primary concerns going forward. And with the way the district is set up, some cities have different financial capabilities than others do, and I think there was a concern that, looking ahead a few years, that some of the, the issues that were starting to affect some libraries when it comes to funding might start to affect more, and so, if we can get ahead of this and start having some discussions, that would be handy.
It would seem like somehow those might always exist anyhow, different, I mean, I'm thinking the different demographics of the various cities within Clackamas County, and I'm, I, you, we may have covered this before, and so forgive me, but does the addition of an, of one more library, the Gladstone Library, change the, you know, the, change the, the spread, I guess, for all the others? And, and is it one of the things that changes the whole funding question and that causes it to?
How can it not if they're adding one more library to your, your operating funds?
They're not adding one more, they're not adding one more library. So the original thought was that the Gladstone Library would go away, but that did not happen. So there currently is a Gladstone Library, so the Gladstone Library is operating, it gets an annual district distribution under.
But the Oak Lodge was supposed to go away, which you have Oak Lodge listed as a city in here, which it is not, but it's listed as a city. I was like, hmm, and unincorporated is a separate.
Yes, in, in the IGA, when we did the IGA amendment, we, the IGA in portions refers to each participant as a library city, and so, we wanted to make sure it was clear that for many purposes, for example, having representation on the district advisory committee, the unincorpor, the Oak Lodge service area does count as a library city, but yes, they are not a city in and of themselves. But no, the, the, there are two libraries currently, Oak Lodge and Gladstone. When the county constructs new facilities and operates them, there will still be the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Library, their service areas are not changing.
But I didn't think that was the original intent. I thought the original intent was one combined library.
Correct. Yes, the original, yes, you are absolutely correct, but for various reasons, which we.
Right.
Yeah, those, those plans did not come to fruition.
So, when you say the county's gonna build them both a library, is the county doing that from other funds? Are they limited to the $1 million that the rest of us got in terms of capital funds?
No, so, so on the Oak Lodge side, so as part of the IGA. No, so, so on the Oak Lodge side, so as part of the IGA, the way it was written is that, again, with the expectation at the time that Oak Lodge would close and Gladstone, the city of Gladstone, would build a combined facility, Oak Lodge was basically running at a very reduced service level. And so the IGA has written, it says, "To the extent that the annual distributions for the Oak Lodge service area exceed the amount needed for operations, those monies get put into a reserve fund for the eventual construction of a new, at the time, a new combined library." That was basically the purpose of the IGA amendment we did, is that there's this reserve pot sitting there that, the way the IGA was currently written, it was going to go to the city of Gladstone. But now, since the county was going to be constructing those libraries, we wanted to make sure the county had legal access to those funds. So, for the library funding mechanism, the, the settlement agreement that was written between the county and the city of Gladstone envisioned that we would use those reserves and the city of Gladstone will be making a $200,000 per year general fund, from their contribution from their general fund to the county to help defray some operational costs. And then the county will receive both district distributions for the Oak Lodge service area and the Gladstone service area. And those will be used to operate both libraries and there will be a portion of that that will be used for debt service.
So, does that division diminish any of the division to the other communities where, like in Milwaukee, for instance, and I'm sure Happy Valley and that's the same, that our library service district extends far out from our city limits, you know, so does part of that go away for us?
No, the boundaries do not change. So, there is nothing in the IGA amendment which changes the, that changed the current boundaries that were in place.
Last, I believe it was last week, I heard that, and I hope I'm gonna say this correctly, that while there will be two physical libraries, they're really considered one entity. And so the, let's say, just say the Oak Grove one, Oak Lodge, Oak Grove, whichever it is, is basically an extension of the Gladstone Library so that it can better serve the people in that population. Now, I wasn't quite clear what that meant and how that worked out.
I would say the, I believe probably what you read was, we are, we're calling this a one library, two building solution.
Yeah.
So, it's for efficiencies and economies of scale. So, the idea is that there are limited, limited district dollars to be able to operate two facilities. In order to make this fiscally viable, we are going to have to run pretty lean and squeeze out as many efficiencies as we can. So, Gladstone will of course keep its identity, it will always be known as the Gladstone Library, it will be a, a, a resource that the citizens of the city of Gladstone can use. We will also have the Oak Lodge Library wherever it ends up, but in the background, the employees at the Gladstone Library will be county employees, so as part of the, the transfer, they are coming over to the county. And in the background, we are going to try to achieve as many efficiencies as possible. So, for example, I'll just give a, a quick example, ordering, you know, we are not going to have materials ordering happening at Gladstone and materials ordering happening at Oak Lodge independent of each other. They are going to order their materials all at once, handle the invoicing, get the materials distributed to each location where they need to be, just to achieve some of those efficiencies. So, from a public service point of view, it's, it's gonna be the Gladstone Library, there's gonna be Oak Lodge Library, but in the backend, we're trying to achieve as many efficiencies as we can to stretch out our operational dollars as far as they'll go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, on the point of the district, the, the areas served, that was the point where the county's answers were woefully inadequate last year when Laura Zentner was here. And her excuse was, I can't even remember what the formula was, there had been some formula in the 90s when the district was formed, but it's absolutely incomprehensible to me in this day and age of your circulation numbers, your circulation data that you have from your circulation system, that we can't have a better sense of what the true service boundaries of our library are. And I definitely will be looking for that to come out of this process. You can measure where, you know, people here are all coming to your library and people out to here are coming to your library more than they're going to Happy Valley, even though it's closer, or they're going, you know, here. I wanna see that data. I wanna see some tough analysis of what our service area is because we may wanna have a satellite library at some point in time. And I do feel like the whole upshot of that meeting last year was that Milwaukee has been screwed by this system of, since it began. Happy Valley got twice as much, got $2 million to build a library, you know, now they're getting more money to our south. We only got the million. We weren't able to go out and go to people in the wider area to do our bond.
Our service area.
Yeah, our full service area to do our bond. So, I wanna know really what's our service area. And I know you library directors all like to play nicey-nicey with each other, but we've gotta look out for Milwaukee, number one, right here. And I think we need some hard push to get data on that.
And if I may, we will be happy to provide whatever data we can to support that. That, that's another comment that we've heard from multiple stakeholders, is looking at those boundaries. The, the one thing I do wanna point out is those boundaries are in the IGA and the county doesn't have unilateral ability to change that IGA, which again, is why we're trying to get a task force together.
Right.
To have a forum where the stakeholders who need to have these discussions can actually have these discussions.
And I think that data is a perfect point for both the finance and the governance committees, probably less so for the services, oh, maybe for them too. But that should be a starting data point.
Yeah, and I also, I, I feel like we're, sometimes we're, we're talking about boundaries versus funding, like, Will, I wanna make sure I understood your question because I wasn't, I was understanding a different question than what was answered.
Oh, okay.
So, your question, you know, you were asking about diminishment of, and then, but I, I understood what you were asking was more about diminishment of funds, but what I heard was.
Well, funds, because if, if some of the service area gets allocated to a different service area, then we don't get that levy amount that would come to us.
Right, okay.
So, that's what I wanted to ensure.
Okay.
Is that.
Well, so, I mean, in turn, I thought it was, I mean, it was, it was in, it was in the context of the conversation around the libraries that were being built in Oak Grove and, and.
Right, because, well, when you look at our service area, you know, how, how far into that Oak Grove or Jennings Lodge or, you know, whatever those, you know, Oak Lodge, how far into that does our service area extend?
Right.
And if Oak Grove then has its own library and Gladstone, Gladstone has its own, I mean, realizing they're one, but they're two buildings, whatever, you know, then does their service area extend further than what it currently does and therefore takes away from some of our service area? And so therefore takes away some of our funding?
Okay.
That's the question I was trying to get answered.
So, as part of everything that we have done to date with the IGA amendment, no, the service area boundaries have not changed. There is not going to be any change to the Gladstone Library service area, there's not going to be any change to the Oak Lodge Library service area. The IGA has specific language on how you make boundary changes and that would have to be something that would go to the entire, you know, that would go to the signatories, to the IGA. And I, I can't, I don't, my crystal ball works just as well as everybody else's, so I, I can't imagine that actually happening. And there's, there's no, there is no intent on the part of the county for that to happen. We are, we are fin, we are making our operational plans and our funding plans based on those existing service areas as they exist today. And we have no expectation that those will change.
So, I have a, a question about membership, if, if you can. So, since Oak Lodge is not a city, will, will they be excluded from, from advancing names for the unincorporated areas?
No, we will run recruitment for those unincorporated residents through our Public and Government Affairs Office at the county, they have a standardized procedure, a process.
So, we could end up with four people from Oak Lodge?
I believe.
I thought it was only two.
It's two and there are some unincorporated.
No, but I mean, because it's unincorporated.
So, there are, there was a desire to have some residents from the unincorporated area to have.
Which I absolutely agree because we have about 20, 30,000 people in our unincorporated area that we serve.
In our UGMA?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, but what I'm saying is that now there also are two unincorporated Clackamas County residents who could also be from Oak Lodge.
Correct, but the feedback that we received from both the library district advisory committee and with our library directors is there's a recognition that the Oak Lodge representatives will be from the unincorporated area within the Oak Lodge service area and it would be nice to have unincorporated residents from elsewhere.
I don't understand that, it's all unincorporated, so help me understand what you just said.
From the library service area.
So, like the Clackamas area, Oak Lodge has a service area.
No, I get that, right, and it's all unincorporated.
So, my question is, would their service area be excluded from the pool of this unincorporated Clackamas? I mean, I think that's, that seems equitable, why, why, why is that a hard?
Would there, so when you're saying, when you're saying when we're recruiting for the unincorporated residents, those unaffiliated, unincorporated residents who are being with there, to make sure that they are not from the Oak Lodge service area?
I would, I mean.
Yes, that, that is the feedback that we have received from our library district advisory committee.
Different geographics. And Jennings Lodge is outside of both those areas, so that might be the unincorporated area that.
No, I think it's Oak, I mean, that's why they call it Oak Lodge, right? It's Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge is Oak Lodge.
And I may have been accidentally losing both interchangeably too.
They, they do.
So, they have different CPOs, so.
But they are with, all within that library service area.
Right. I guess they would be, right? Cause it goes to the Gladstone city limits and then it comes to the Milwaukee UGMA, well, Gladstone UGMA, Milwaukee UGMA.
Right.
That's confusing. I mean, I don't think it's fully answered yet whether that means four people who are gonna represent that unincorporated area and therefore four who could be anywhere in Oak Lodge, Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge area.
It could also be our unincorporated area, it could be Lake Oswego's unincorporated area. Each library has an area that's unincorporated, Canby has a huge.
So, that unincorporated Clackamas County could be Welch's, it could be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We always, I think, tend to automatically think of it as being right next door.
No, and I think that's, I think that's fine and it seems to me like that should be the intention of that unincorporated. But what I'm pointing out is that because we have an unincorporated service district listed, it could be, there is the potential for them to be overrepresented in a group like this.
Well, it could overrepresent us, it could be, you know, if we had.
We're a city, I mean, we have different obligations and contributions, I think, to.
No, but our 20,000, that is, our 20,000 that is not part of the city that is in the unincorporated area, we could have two people, you know, one from the city and then one from ours that are our representatives and then somebody else could be on that unincorporated area.
I mean, effectively, we're going to have overrepresentation.
Someone is always.
Right, someone's going to be in one of these library districts and be in unincorporated county.
I, I think so.
Necessarily so, yes.
Yeah, not intentionally, they were trying to have a representation of the unincorporated areas. However, we try to have, we have a couple of people on our library board that are from the unincorporated area. We, we, you know, we, we don't really say, oh, it's unincorporated or city, we, this is our service area.
Right.
And I think that's how everybody pretty much feels. But I, like, Oregon City, and I am correcting Greg on this, there is a push by Canby because the way their lines are drawn, Oregon City goes to, like, across the street from their store, you know, I mean, their, their schools. And they're, they want those lines re, just looked at because they're serving all of these people that are technically Oregon Cities. So, they will be looked at, the, the lines. I don't know how it's going to affect the rest of us, whether we're all gonna be looking at the lines, whether they're going to look at the census, try to redraw them all, but Canby has brought up, because they get so little money in comparison to Oregon City and it's because Oregon City has 54,000 people that's in their service district, whereas, you know, Canby has like 30. But there's a lot that are in that area that's going to Oregon City that are really close to Canby. So, they're.
Yeah, no, they need to validate those numbers all the way around and there's no reason with library cards and library, you know, circulation data that that can't just be pretty simple, you know? Library cards have to have an address, right? So, you can tell where people are coming from when they're getting things from your, from your library.
This, this project makes me nervous because I didn't hear a straight answer about, about what its intent is and we had a very clear statement of a question and it feels to me like it's, it's ambitious and it's well-intentioned in that there's a recognized need for collaboration, which you always need with this big library with multiple districts and whatnot, I get that. But anytime you have particularly a governmental agency that is just kinda creating an enormous committee to talk about some stuff, I get nervous because it turns into a time sink for staff and it ends up with ugly outcomes. And, you know, I hear buried in this a real concern for library funding, I wish that had been addressed more directly and that there'd been more honesty about that because I feel like perhaps this is an effort to get a conversation going about raising the assessment for libraries and that makes me nervous in a community that just paid $9 million for a library out of its own pocket that is serving way more than its residents and it's only our residents that are paying for it. So, I, I applaud the effort to bring people together, but I really wish you had a clearer statement of purpose, clearer outcomes.
If I may, the, one reason that we've been at the county level that we've been hesitant to do so is, again, this is a district that every library city is, is an equal partner in it and there's nothing the, the county can dictate that's going to be binding upon the members of that IGA. So, we were doing our best to be able to take the feedback that we had heard to try to get a forum that could address some of that. And as part of our timeline, one of the first things we wanna do is get this group together and help them refine what exactly it is they, they really wanna focus on. So, I hear that feedback, I hope you don't, I, I, it's not, it's not an intentional obfuscation of what we're trying to do or any intentional squishiness, it was a respect and a sensitivity to the fact that we have multiple partners in this district and we wanna respect that we, we can't guide the conversation. We want it to be a conversation that's somewhat organically grown and addresses the issues that each one of the library cities wants to address.
Is there any way to establish some sort of timeline or expectation so that six months from now, for example, sorry.
There is a timeline in here.
We, we know what we can expect to hear back in terms of have you, has this group been able to determine what its concrete goals are at this point? You know, that would make me feel a lot better if I knew, you know, three months in, we will have figured out we're doing these three things or what have you.
It's scheduled to be about an 18-month process.
Right. Which is a very tight timeline for a group of this size.
Yeah, and there is a timeline in here, it's fairly ambitious.
I read it. Yeah.
So, i- if I may summarize the feedback.
Sure.
And to make sure I'm understanding and I think we can hopefully address some of those concerns, having a, a check-in point, the more towards the beginning of the process where you can have a better idea of what the outcomes, desired outcomes are, what the parameters of this group are going to be and how they're going to approach their work going forward, is that, is that fair?
I would love to see that and not five months in with an 18-month process. If it could be sooner, that would be fabulous.
I believe our intent was, after those first couple of education and feedback sessions, was to kinda get that hammered out before we even have the first meeting, you know, so I, I think we're going to be able to address that concern, so.
An ambitious undertaking, especially when you don't know where you're headed.
Yep. And I wanna make sure, are there any other questions? I, I don't want anybody to feel like I didn't answer a question that, that was asked, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna, so when we, when the subcommittee, when the funding subcommittee is meeting, I hope you'll, you'll get a lot of data from the finance departments of each of the cities. You know, I think that that'll help at least paint a clearer picture around the questions around equity that we've been concerned about for, for quite a while now. Yes.
Yep. And you wanna talk about the data, about the annual progress report?
Yeah, so the library district advisory committee gathers annually information from each city about their financials and so they've been going through and finalizing the form, they made some changes to it, so the, that will be updated and, as part of the task force.
Okay.
So, just to, since we have you trapped here.
Sure.
Just one more question to Lisa's point about that data. Would that form be aware where we could start getting at some of that basic circulation information that we feel should be relatively accessible? Cause maybe, maybe there's something I don't understand.
And when you say the circulation information, I wanna, we, we do. And when you say the circulation information, I want to, we, we do have circulation data, so we've got some fairly robust analytics tools that we can certainly provide data. So if there was data that has not been provided in the past that you have asked for, I would love to hear. But I, I recall that when we came, we did provide some sub-data.
You had a big spreadsheet, I remember you had a big spreadsheet, but I think, you know, it should be a map, you know? Here's the dots, and all the dots that are red are Milwaukee, and all the dots that are green are Oak Lodge, and where's the, where do we see the dividing points, you know?
Yeah, it wasn't granular, it didn't tell, it didn't, it said, it said service at a location, but it didn't tell you at all about where those people were coming from.
Where those people live. We can, we, we should be able to do something like that. I will, just, just to be perfectly upfront, there's, there's not a current GIS integration with our analytic system that we have, but I don't see why we couldn't work to.
Even zip codes would provide a little more clarity.
And the, the other thing I will say is that we do anticipate, once the new Oak Lodge library is built, I remember when we did the, when we did the analysis the last time we came, is that there were a number of Oak Lodge service area residents who are using the Milwaukee library.
Oh, yeah.
Because the current Oak Lodge facility is, is substandard, it's insufficient.
Well, and it sounds like if you're operating it sort of, you know, not a full, I mean, it won't be, and it still won't be clearly, it won't be as staffed and programmed as our library. I mean, if it's a two-in-one kind of deal, then I don't know how you could possibly operate it as a full library.
Our intent is to operate it as, as, as with a full library. So every library has standards that they're expected to achieve per the IGA. We intend to meet all those standards. We intend to provide great, this, great service to the residents of the Oak Lodge library. But I do think that once they have a new facility there, I do think, we, we are anticipating that you will see some of the people who are using the Milwaukee library are going to start going to the Oak Lodge library because it's more convenient for them, and it will be a much upgraded facility from what they currently have.
Well, and I guess actually statistics for the last year when we've been in temporary quarters may not be the most representative statistics either, because I'm sure our numbers are down, too.
Well, and Oak Lodge, didn't Oak Lodge have an outage for a while, too? They were, am I misremembering? Because I actually go to Oak Lodge on occasion because it's on my way to other places.
They've cut hours once or twice, but.
That's what I'm thinking of.
They've got parking issues, they only have six.
Yeah, it's, it's a compromise.
How soon do you think they are to, is that still focused on Concord School, their most likely new home?
I want to, I want to be, make sure I'm speaking accurately, respecting the community input process. So we do have two task, two more task forces going. So we have a Gladstone task force, and we're calling it the Concord Property and Library Planning Task Force. The Concord School is owned by NCPRD, and when they acquired it, based on community feedback in the Oak Lodge service area and some of our internal conversations, we thought if it could work, what a great facility that would be for the community, a combined park, community center, and library, all focused on this historic building. So we convened a task force to look at the potential best uses of that Concord facility, and one of those purposes potentially is the location of the Oak Lodge library. Now, we are leaving it to the task force. We want them to help us with the evaluation and to make a final recommendation about whether or not the library can fit there, whether it works operationally. So no decision has been made, but that is an option that we are looking at as part of our planning process.
And not studying any other options until that one plays out?
Correct. With, the, the task force did agree that we should focus our efforts first and foremost on the Concord site.
And what is, do you have a timeline for when that's supposed to wrap up?
We just finished the RFP process, and we have selected the, the, the winning firm, it's Opsys Architecture. We're in the process now of working on a scope of work with them, and we anticipate the contract will be finalized with the board, excuse me, probably by the end of September. But we've already been having meetings with Opsys and working out the plan. So I think it's about, I don't have it in front of me, so please don't quote me, but I believe from the, the time we start in earnest to the time we get a master plan for the site is going to be about a year, you know, to look at all those things. But we're, we're, we're moving forward. We just had a really great meeting, joint meeting with the Gladstone task force and the Concord task force with Opsys and their subcontractors, and it was a really good discussion. The, the community members got to meet, meet the team that's going to be working on these projects. It was really positive, so.
Well, we are about 45 seconds over time, so if we don't have any other questions, I will keep us on track. Thank you, I know some of our questions are uncomfortable, and you might not have answers, but we're not going to forget them, so.
And any other questions, please reach out to me, and I will answer them as best I can. I'll try and get, you know, the data that we're looking for. It would be great to have a map and see, because we have a lot of people that come from Portland.
I know. Yeah, I have some very good friends who come here to your, to our library all the time.
We, you know, and I know they're not in our service area, but we do service them.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll, I think we'll all probably brainstorm on some names for volunteer members.
Good.
Thank you.
Send them my.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you.
You, too. Next up, we have Comprehensive Plan Block Three Policies Review Discussion with Denny Egner.
Denny Egner, in, in for, pinch hitting for David Levitin. David's on vacation in beautiful Buffalo, New York.
Really?
Yep.
We all make strange choices in life sometimes.
We're, we're on the home stretch here with.
Most people would take great ones to that one.
We're on the home stretch with the Comp Plan Policies. This is the final block, Block Three, and I think it's the first time the councils had a chance to really look at the, the work that's been done so far. Actually, this, this block has been going on a long time, because we, we started it back in the winter, I believe, because, and we had to slow it down because we got, we accelerated the work on housing, and it just, it drew it out probably a couple more meetings than we would have originally hoped with CPAC. We had a lot of outreach, though, on this, on this block. CPAC's had four meetings, they just had one on the 30th. David, before he left, did an excellent job of capturing their comments and getting it into the packet that went out to you. We've had pretty good outreach with staff, talking with Public Works and Natalie and Sustainability and Steve Adams, our new city engineer. Planning Commissions looked at these twice, they're going to look at them again next Had a open house, a physical open house at PSB, and had about, I don't know, somewhere between 40 and 60 people. I think 40 signed in, but there were a number of people that came that didn't sign in. And then we had an online open house that asked basically the same questions, and we had almost 200 people participate in that. In addition, there were two focus groups, one with some environmental organizations and the other with Latinx representatives. There were, I think, 15 people there. Coming up, we've got the Planning Commission meeting next week. We've got a, a council meeting in two weeks to potentially pin down policies. And then we have had a request today from Ben Russo, one of the members of the CPAC, to give the CPAC another crack at the urban design policies. And, and they spent a lot more time on the other policies than on urban design. And so what I had suggested to Ben is that we not vary from the schedule, but we go ahead and hold a, a meeting with CPAC where they talk about those and fold that back into the, the hearing process so that we can adjust policies at that time. You know, it might mean that during the resolution where council pins down those, we make a note that the urban design policies are still moving, there's still a little more.
So why not just, I, actually, when I read the urban design policies, because we didn't get through them at CPAC, we didn't even touch on them at the last CPAC meeting, I thought, there, I had a lot of questions and a lot of comments. So why wouldn't we just put, pin down, pinning down a month or meeting later?
Well, because your September meetings are really packed, and we would like to start moving the adoption process forward with at least some set of draft policies in the packet so that we can post them and get, get them out there. But I think that it doesn't stop us. We'd like to try to begin the hearing process in October.
I mean, there's a ton of staff work, right, to this whole reconciling and figuring out all the overlaps and all of that? And I mean, that could go on with everything but urban design.
Yeah.
Urban design, right?
I, I, I guess what I might suggest is that you could pin down the other Block Three elements and leave urban design open, and then we would, and direct us to start moving forward, and we would just be able to bring those back, have more focused discussion on urban design. I think they're going to be, I don't, you know, I mean, as I think about the whole set of policies, there's some repetitiveness. We want to go back and look at all the policies in light of the vision and some of the criteria we, we've set out in terms of equity and sustainability. I, you know, I, we've been thinking about that all along, so I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of reconciliation that needs to come out of that. The bigger task for us, I think, is how we organize all the policies and the background sections and kind of package that. So we would really like to get started doing that work. We haven't done much of it.
So at the end of the last CPAC meeting, you gave the CPAC some links to some other plans to talk about what do we make it look like? What's the format? And, I mean, it also seems like you probably, after that discussion, want to have that discussion with council, and so, I don't know why, yeah, I don't know why pinning down on the 20th.
What I suggested, what I suggested to Ben in the email today, and he didn't respond, and Anne saw the email, and Anne didn't respond, she might have an opinion as well, was that we would come back in September with another CPAC meeting to focus on the urban design policies and some of that structural work. Those, the structural, how we organize the policies ultimately, I think is much less important than the policies themselves in that we've got the, that's the meat, the structure's kind of how to, how to, you know, what's a comfortable way for the community to understand these. And the, the difference for those of you that weren't in the, didn't see this before, was the, it was, we can organize them by statewide planning goals, and we sort of have to this point. It was a, a reasonable way to kind of talk about them. But when we started, we had started this process well over a year ago, we were looking at a, a structure that used our five vision super actions as the structure. And at this point, I'm not 100% certain that makes sense. So I think, and what we provided to the CPAC were also some, a, a couple of models that other jurisdictions have used. Hillsborough and, and Lake Oswego have done more topical, more topical groupings of, of policies. That's not a bad, that's, that's not a bad way to do it, and, but it's not that much different than kind of the way we've approached them right now, and I think they would fit that, that approach pretty well.
I mean, I think they, yeah, they can be repackaged into, but I do think, yeah, there's a lot of appeal to a more plain language, ordinary term stuff than statewide planning goals are.
I would, I would agree. For, the statewide planning goals include, one of the goals is energy, and, you know, we used climate change and sustainability as top, not, sustainability wasn't a topic, but we use climate change as a topic, and there isn't a goal for that. But we could capture those elements in a chapter together. The other, the other one that is before you tonight, natural resources and environmental quality, we sort of collapsed, we've collapsed those together in these policies. Those are two separate statewide planning goals. So, you know, there's, we've played a little loose with the goals, but, but I think the topics all make sense. So that's the way we've been approaching it. So I don't think it's going to be, I don't think that has to be a lengthy discussion with either the CPAC or the council unless we want to really go back and try to make everything fit into the five super actions. I think that's going to be harder.
What I'm hearing you say is that it would be helpful for staff to have time to think about those things, and for us to proceed with pinning things down, accepting the urban pieces.
Urban design piece.
Would help facilitate that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I, I think that bringing that back, you know, by pinning the policies down, they aren't final. It's, it's that we still have to have hearings on them, and, and there'll be wordsmithing on, on a number of them. So I, I don't see any, the pinning down process is, is important because it means that in the end, hopefully, we're not doing all that same wordsmithing that we, we did. We're, we're still trying to think about the big picture. But, so we, so we might have to do some wordsmithing on urban design at the end. I don't, I don't know that that's a huge issue, but I agree, there are a lot of, there's a lot of meat there to talk about. You were going to say something?
It's already gone, so it can't, it wasn't that great.
Sorry. The other, the other thing that I wanted to note is, Counselor Faulkner, Council President Faulkner asked a question before about the survey, the survey responses, and the survey, and I was able to contact our consultant while you guys were talking about the library work. And the comments, the online comments were not included as part of your packet materials. There were online, there were comments in your packet materials from the open house, but the, the online comments are still being processed. And what they have done, what they're doing with those is trying to categorize them into topics and then sort of counting the comments related to topic.
But we'll still get that raw data.
The raw data is still going to be available, but that, that's kind of what they, what's taken them so long to, to get this report out. I was told we're going to get a draft report tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think that's, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that's really important. I mean, there were so many more, more contribu, you know, contributions online than there were at the open house. So to, to, you know, we need to make sure we've got all of it.
Well, and the other thing about the online that came up at the CPAC meeting, because there was a huge number of, like a quarter of the people were from outside of Milwaukee, which is higher, I mean, we always have some, but that was higher, and I think a lot of that was explained by North Clackamas Watershed Council really promoted this pretty heavily to their members to participate both in the meeting and in the online survey. Their membership goes to out to Happy Valley and probably beyond, and down to Gladstone, probably a little bit into Oregon City. So I had asked that we get the demogra, actually, I'd like to see all of the answers separated for Milwaukee residents and other, you know, as opposed to the full pool, but especially the demographic.
And I'm not, I'm not certain what they're going to give us back right now in this draft.
Well, we were encouraging, and I mean, did we, sorry if I don't remember, we were encouraging and even contemplating membership on CPAC for our UGMA. So I want to make sure that, you know, however we're parsing this out, we're making sure that we're not just lumping all of, you know, non-residents together, because.
Well, that's a good point.
We, yeah, and I don't think we're going to, basically what we'll get is residents, non-residents. We won't know where they are, whether they're in the UGMA or whether they're.
Oh, because we didn't ask them.
We were asking zip code, weren't we?
But what, what I'm saying is, in the, in the inventory, or in the survey, the online survey, it didn't give you a, we're, we're not recording where you were, we asked what neighborhood you were in.
Oh, yeah, we captured neighborhood, not.
So we're not going to, we're not going to get that fine grain of, that fine a grain of data. Yeah, and.
Something to keep in mind, I guess.
We don't know. We don't know if there, if there's going to, if it's going to show a big difference or not at this point.
Well, I can think of a few of the members who probably skew the income data if nothing else, so.
That's true. I mean, even when we don't have big numbers of, you know, of out, you know, non-residents participating, that's always been the case. And any, I don't want to get too invested in thinking that this survey is exactly representative of anything in particular, so I, you know, it's, it was a useful thing to ask people for some feedback, but I don't think it's a direct representation of our community, so.
It's kind of validation, you know, are we in the, moving in the right direction as much as anything.
No, and it's also just sort of a checkpoint, you know, for ourselves. I mean, as we, you know, as we, you know, continue to improve with public engagement and reaching people, you know, in different spaces, you know, in different ways, you know, are we improving on this?
The, I forgot to mention, we also met with the DLC and they provided some comments on urban design, so that was one, one more touch point. So the thing I wanted to point out is we sent you a clean copy of all the comments. If you can, this is, this is the front page of the, of the track changes copy, and I think from there you can see the difference in colors. This is typical of a page in this document, so they, half of the words have been altered from the first draft at this point, you know, so I mean, there, I think there's been, we've tried to capture a lot of the thoughts and ideas that have been suggested to us and we're still open to that. So I, but I, I think, I think it's been a, a pretty, a pretty good process so far and I'm curious to see, you know, if you've had a chance to look through this, I'm not going to, I'm going to stop talking in just a second, but I'm just kind of curious if you've got some feedback for us that we can relay to the Planning Commission next week or things that, if things seem like they're going in the right direction or what. And Counselor Beatty's comments about urban design, there are some media items in there that haven't gotten as much discussion.
I have a couple, if you're ready. So on, there were a couple of things that stuck out to me about, so let's see, work session 57, goal four, developing healthy urban forest in Milwaukee. This has come up a few times, I definitely remember it coming up during Vision, you know, the prioritization of native species and whether or not that that, you know, adds our climate changes as in some of our, you know, unfortunately, we only have so much control over that, whether or not, you know, in certain circumstances, it's, it's actually inappropriate to consider native species because of urban environments and warming environment, a warming climate. And so, you know, we had talked quite a bit about that envisioning where, you know, we've, we've always sort of, that's kind of been like the rule of thumb, you know, we've always sort of said like native species, we want to prioritize that, but that can be problematic and sometimes those trees are not going to survive in certain environments.
Maybe something like climate adaptable or something.
And not just, not even just, you know, not just climate, but, you know, factoring in specific, you know, site challenges too. So I would just, you know, maybe try to be a little bit more flexible with, you know, just sort of, you know, just the appropriateness of a species and it's, I mean, I still think in a lot of cases, the native species will be right.
You're absolutely right. You'll need a, you'll need an arborist and, you know, an expert who knows which ones are going to be more adaptable longer term, but, I mean, there's still a lot of native species that will be right. It's just a matter of not limiting to that maybe.
Right.
We'll all be having California native species.
Well, and under number five in there, it does call out existing native species and climate adapted trees, so.
So it seems like we could just use the same language and, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, in the, you know, when we're interpreting that policy sometime down the road, we can sort of decide whether or not we're saying, you know, specific, site specific climate or bigger picture climate.
Yeah, well, and that, you know, that's, that was something that came up in the Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee conversation about the master plan for the Kellogg landscaping where they actually had someone go out and do some soil site testing and figured out which trees belonged in very specific spots because they did have some serious dieback issues with the initial planting. And so they figured out, oh, we need to actually really figure out what the different soil areas are like in this particular site because it has been disturbed so frequently.
Yeah.
And that will affect the survival rate of future plantings.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, lots of contributing factors, you know, I mean, how close it is to a building and the type of building, how much heat that building is putting off and whether or not it's in a planting strip or a curbside, you know, I mean, there's so many factors that where, you know, we could have a list of native species that would all die in those environments.
Yeah.
And then the other one, let's see, I don't know a lot about daylighting creeks, but it seems to be about letting people look at a creek, which doesn't protect fish very much. So daylighting a creek, as I understand it, is sort of opening up and sort of encouraging people to enjoy a creek versus protecting, you know, for example, water temperature by shading a creek. And so I have a little bit of concerns around there and I'm wondering if you can... Well, so daylight, I mean, and I'm guessing this came from Joseph Edge.
They did, most of the comments about daylighting.
Yeah, I, and it's in there several times and I brought it up at the CPAC. I'm pretty concerned about having a one size fits all thing for daylighting creeks. I mean, if a creek, like Spring Creek going through downtown, and when we did, moving forward in Milwaukee, we did have a map that sort of showed where Spring Creek is under, you know, downtown buildings and stuff. If it's underground that far, it's probably not fish passage much anyway. So, I mean, daylighting can be for the benefit of fish because you're getting them out of culverts and you're getting, I mean, daylighting presumably comes with also some revegetating.
It can, yeah.
But there was also literature I was finding, you know, about daylighting simply means like letting people look at it.
Yeah, literally like taking the trees away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, and you think about some of the cities, like my hometown has done this canal thing where it's just, you know, it's a canal, it's not really a creek. So, yeah, there's that, I mean, to me, all creeks are not created alike or equal in terms of habitat value. We also have some places, and I'm thinking now of the property, there's a, it's sort of an unnamed creek or a, that goes along the north edge of the Sparrow.
The Trimente Lot.
Remnant Lot, goes down under McLaughlin and some, at some point goes out up through the apartments and into Kellogg Lake. It comes, it is daylighted through a couple of people's properties and down there, but then up above it's under a road and it's probably under the PGE, there's a substation up there, somewhere in that area. Daylighting that would not achieve anything, you know, in terms of habitat.
Right.
You know, that would be a silly waste of money to daylight that thing. So, I mean, I think the idea of, you know, when, but, but conversely, in, in the, in the international way industrial area, there are some good opportunities for improving Minthorne Creek, both daylighting it in some places, getting it out of culverts, but also even there is a place where it's like in a canal and instead, you know, breaking all that concrete up and getting it a regular.
Right.
So, I mean, there are some opportunities we should be prepared for and, and want to seize on, but I, just this idea of daylight creeks where possible, some places it's said possible, some places it's said feasible, seems way too broad to me.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd, I guess maybe I'd be a little bit more comfortable with, with setting a little bit more, you know, kind of guardrails around what feasibility means, you know, and, and what, what possible means, you know, and putting, making sure that like, you know, because somebody could interpret that as, well, can we afford to do it, you know?
Right, right, right.
And I don't, I mean, that's not a good measurement by my own eyes.
I mean, for my, my person, I mean, yeah, there's, you know, there's a cost benefit analysis of the habitat value and everything else and, so I don't know if it should be, I mean, I know you guys were going to try and pull together a map. I don't know how easy or hard that is.
It, we haven't done that. We need to do that.
I mean, I guess, I think maybe the language should be more about analyze each creek for, or analyze identified.
Creeks or waterways.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing is what is it? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I mean, what about just, you know, examining opportunities to daylight creeks and then put in some additional language, you know, like I said, like guardrails around, like what are the goals of this? Not just whether it's feasible, what are we trying to achieve? With sensitivity to habitat improvements.
Sensitivity to habitat, yeah, exactly.
Financial.
I actually love that language. If we can push it more that direction, it takes it back into what the comp plan is supposed to be focusing on and it also gives us some flexibility on how we do that. I love it. That's all I have.
I think those are great comments, but I do think that the whole purpose of daylighting was primarily focused at habitat enhancement and not...
Yeah, that was certainly his motivation.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it was. I just, it just, when I was reading it, that definitely was not clear to me and I was afraid that it could lead to some pretty disastrous.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, and there are places where, I mean, if you say possible, possible just means, can it be done at any cost? Yeah, we could knock down all of Milwaukee north of here and daylight Crystal Springs or Crystal, whatever it's called, Spring Creek, but that's not what anybody thinks we should do.
Good.
Other?
Oh, yeah. I'll go, I should be able to whip through them quickly. On WS 55, I'm sorry I didn't get these to you sooner. I didn't think I would have that many and then I did and I went, oh, shoot. Oh, I'm sorry, it must be 56.
So say they start on 56 if they're a clean, clean copy.
Number two, it wasn't clear to me to, who we were encouraging collaboration with, if that was the community or the public or stakeholders or businesses or just a little more, it might even just be a single word. And then on number three, tell me if I'm moving too fast, under resources, I sort of wanted to reword this because I just kept getting hung up in all of the clauses, because the support kind of hangs out there, so I was playing with it. And I think I had said, "Support the cleanup and remediation of brownfields and other potentially contaminated land by identifying and pursuing available resources for such work in an effort to protect natural resources and the city's groundwater supply." And if I'm just being too wordsmithy, I can just email you later. Does that?
I think I caught that and it made sense to me. So it's just about making sure that we, again, have the goal assessment as to why we're doing it, it's not simply for the point of doing it.
Right, perfect. Goal two, number six, I think this was another wordsmithy one. And I understand the desire to lead with an active verb, but I was having a hard time with doing that with that one, so I, I had suggested, "When considering development proposals, take into account changes in water flow, et cetera, et cetera, and downstream impacts of development in upland areas." You caught me on a really editorial day.
Okay.
Sorry. Did that, that make sense?
Can you do it one more time?
Sure. "When considering development proposals, take into account changes in water flow, et cetera, et cetera, and downstream impacts of development in upland areas."
I like that. I actually think that's much clearer. To me, when I was reading this before, I was thinking, well, we have absolutely no control over development in Happy Valley.
Yeah.
I mean, what would we even, like, how would we apply this?
Right, right. It was just, yeah, I know, some amorphousness buried in the, the language.
Yeah, it seems to me like that must be the intent and that's better stated. That makes it clear for me.
Does, does that also match the intent that you thought it had?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't actually understand this note on number seven, so we'll just skip it. I had a question, is, is solar considered a resource?
It would be in a different category. It would be under the climate change energy set of, of policies.
And we'll deal with the inevitable conflict between that and canopy policy when we get to that stage.
Well, in the code, in the code language, we will. Yeah, who wins, I'm not sure.
I don't know either. I'm, I'm not placing any bets anywhere. There's a period missing on goal five on number WS 58. And I had a question under goal six, just about what do we currently do regarding good neighbor agreements?
Regarding what?
Good neighbor agreements.
They're a case by case kind of situation. So, I mean, the only, I think formal good neighbor agreement we have was with Kellogg.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
We've done, sort of, we've pushed for an informal good neighbor agreement for the baseball field and the neighbors around, around that, so.
Okay. I, I wonder if there's, again, maybe I'm getting too technical here, but if there's, if there's any benefit to calling out the possibility of partnering with, for example, if PCC were ever to have some sort of good neighbor agreement that it burgured with Portland, I think we would want to be a part of that conversation.
Where, where, what number are you on?
Goal 63 on WS 58.
Yeah, yeah, and I think this was, I mean, I think there is some hope, some hope by people who live along Johnson Creek of some good neighbor agreements with several of the people along there.
Yeah, and that's another instance where we would want to partner with the other side of the creek.
Yeah.
And then on WS 60, goal one, number six, I had a note about, does this mean like tax abatements for affordable housing or what are the, what are the exceptional cases where we're providing incentives to?
That's exactly the one I thought of.
Yeah, okay.
I think this is one that was, was changed, but it was the, there are times when we create incentives to get things and we didn't want to just say that for this one and for annexation, that there are, sometimes it makes sense to have the general fund support development. So, taking it back, previous, the current plan includes pretty specific language about having developers pay their own way in all cases and not providing any type of general fund incentive for annexation or other types of, of programs. So we were basically adjusting some of these policies to provide greater flexibility.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought it meant, but I just wanted to be sure that I, I really understood it. And then I am actually done. One nine, I was just wondering if there was any benefit to calling out planning for climate resiliency when we're talking about providing infrastructure and facilities that can reasonably withstand natural or manmade disasters?
Uh huh.
Thank you for your patience.
Well, again, that's in the other, you feel like that's covered in the other?
Well, part of the task that we have before us is to go through and try to do some sort of matrix matching up policies from one section to another.
I don't envy you that much.
And between, between the climate section, the natural resources section and the public facility section, there are times when we basically say the same thing. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to, we're gonna make sure, one, there are no conflicts between them, and two, just some sort of cross referencing system so that we know how to, how to deal with them. It's, there's no, there's no true problem in having it said in three different places, but it may be redundant, we may not need to.
Yeah, and that's why I phrased it as a question, because it's, I don't know that there's any benefit to that. I, sorry, I did have one more, which was just at the bottom. I, sorry, I did have one more, which was just at the bottom of WS 67, there is a question, "Public park or is private open space okay?"
Right.
So we should probably, I assume that question was addressed to us?
The questions, the, the question's still out there.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it is a-
I mean, that's part of the urban design, which we'll be coming back to, but, yeah.
And just even as late as this afternoon, Mary and I were trying to figure out some of, what some of these mean, and whether or not we get what we think we want out of these, guide, and not really guidelines, are policies for where a zone change, what property would be eligible for a potential upzoning. And the, I don't think, I don't think they're bad conceptually, but in terms of practically, they may not actually all work. I mean, the idea of being in walking distance to a commercial services in a park, and reasonable transportation, that was kind of what's set up here. And there are a couple places that probably make sense for higher density for zone change, but they're, what it's really showing us is some park deficient areas.
I was gonna say, this half mile to a park, I mean, most of our city would not-
Half mile, yeah, quarter mile, though, it's, quarter mile, that's not necessarily true.
Yeah.
The, the King, the, the Safeway, King Road Shopping Center, that location-
Uh huh.
-it's more than a quarter mile to a park in every, in every direction, or a school. And that's, that was another thing that, I want to say quarter mile to a park or school here.
Okay.
And in terms of commercial services, we want to say commercial services or a neighborhood hub, which is still in the, in the works. So there were a few things that as we, we're going back through this, we wanted to tweak. So that's one of them that I know isn't quite right yet.
I mean, I do think we ought to have a conversation about neighborhood hubs specifically, we haven't since you guys went out and did all the-
Yeah.
-work and the data, and I saw this question about one at Railroad and Stanley, and my gut reaction to that is no, that a hub has to have neighborhoods on all, or most sides of it, and anything on railroad only has neighborhood 50% of the way around it. So how is that a hub?
Well, that one comes from Linwood, basically a request by the Linwood NDA. They, they have a, there's a hub that is actually at the intersection of Harmony and, and Linwood-
Right.
-with the little, the little convenience store and some other things, but it's, it's perceived to be really difficult to get to, and, and not a particularly pleasant place, but, I mean, over time, if we have some good incentives, it could be a, it could be a reasonable hub. Do you need another one that close? I'm not sure, but, uh-
We just need to get Moda to move that bike wash station over to that one, and then everyone will be on that greenway.
Is there a question, Sue? I know that there was a suggestion from one of the people at the Linwood Neighborhood Association about a hub at Stanley and Monroe, but I didn't remember anything about Stanley and Railroad, because somebody has-
Oh, Stanley and Monroe makes a lot more sense.
Somebody has property at Stanley and Monroe, and thought about the possibility of that becoming a hub.
Well, we've got the, the little store there at Stanley and Home, and then, at, from Stanley and Monroe-
No, you mean Monroe and Home.
Monroe and Home, yeah, I'm sorry, Monroe and Home. And, and the King Road Shopping Center's not terribly far away from that location, you know, so, let me note that, you know, it's like, what's the, what's the concept for a hub that's being suggested? We don't necessarily, we kind of went around to find ideas, whether people had locations that they were interested in.
Right.
That's just not one that came up when we were going through that process.
I know that one of our residents said, you know, he, there, his family has some property, and he wondered about the feasibility of that becoming a hub area, and who he should talk to.
No, I, we don't have-
He is not buying property.
And we don't have, you know, it's, it's not, you know, actually, that was something I was hoping to work on over the next week, was the, the hub concept, and try to craft some language related to that, that might help move us to the next stage, which is partly, how do we pin these down? What are we, what are we gonna do with?
Yeah.
And there's three, there's a couple different types of hubs out there. There's those that we should rezone to the neighborhood mixed use, those are the more commercial-focused hubs, there's, and then there's the hubs that are small commercial areas, sort of like the, the current CN zone, which is CN or CL, CN zone, which, there are no uses there other than conditional uses, there's like a couple of little convenience stores, the one down in historic Milwaukee, and then one up on, it's a 42nd, I think, that little convenience store. Those are just stuck as they are without going through a conditional use, and then the one on Monroe, those, 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 they can't do anything there without going through a conditional use process. So we want to do something to those, whether we keep the CN zone, or make it a hub zone or something where, where, but there needs to be more flexibility to allow those guys to put in an outdoor seating area, a little restaurant, to do more than just this, this funky convenience store that they've got. And then, there's the community gathering place type hub, and what each of these mean, and how they might expand, or be able to expand. So those are the, we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of thoughts about it, but there hasn't been like a concrete proposal to talk about. We've got cool ideas for each one. I'm, I'm, I'm leaving Thursday for nine days, helping my mom get resettled back into her house after a stint in a nursing home, and some of that's gonna be work time, and that was, that was one of the things I was actually thinking I might work on when mom's resting.
Very ambitious.
Yeah.
Well, good luck on any others in front. We are two minutes ahead.
Well, I have a ton on urban design, but I'll just bring them to the CPAC.
But it sounds like we're gonna have to come back to that end.
Or if you have, you know, if-
Well, yeah, I mean, it's clearly not.
If you have some that you can share with me outside of this, before we go any further on, on this stuff, that'd be good, too.
Well, so one big one I had on urban design, which I'll just mention for everybody, is a lot of them talk about improving pedestrian and biking modes, and there's a little bit of, you know, talk about transit, what's, what seemed to me missing was talking about shuttles, or our own transit system. There's one passage on, for North Milwa- I mean, for International Way Industrial Area that does kind of call out shuttles and shuttle stops, but I don't know why we wouldn't be saying that in North Milwaukee, I don't know why we wouldn't be saying that with neighborhood mixed use zones, and even downtown.
That's a real good call. There is a, I know that somewhere we wrote that, for shuttles and for like Uber, Lyft, drop-offs-
It was in the climate section, I believe.
Yeah, and even, you know, ultimately automated vehicles, I mean, we, we need to-
There is one in there about converting parking to Lyft, drop-off zones, which makes sense.
That's gonna be, at some point out there in the future, that's gonna be an issue, it's like the, and, and then converting parking for that, or designing for that. It was, it was something I thought of way too late for the library design review. The li- library was designed, and I don't know if it would, I don't know if there was any way to really do it in a reasonable way, because of those trees, but, you know, it was, I don't know how the, how the, the automated vehicle, the automated-
You mean on the Harrison side you're talking about?
Yeah.
Not in front, but in, on the Harrison, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, congestion's gonna be a real problem, that we'll all have to deal with, I mean, so much of the city was not designed for that, so.
Yep. So, it was a-
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, that's the next, that's the next round of comp plan amendments. I mean, when it's a little bit closer, yeah.
Thank you.
We do have a TSP update coming, so that, that might give us a chance.
Yeah.
Thanks, Danny.
Okay.
Okay. We are adjourned from work session.
Oh, don't we have, Christina?
Oh, no, she's actually later tonight, tonight, and just so people know, we are going to put her into my city manager update time, so that she can go home at a decent hour.
I thought, thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
Does she want to just do it now?
We can, it's up to you, but you are into your dinner. We are getting into dinner, and I think we've got a big meeting, so I think if it's, I mean, if that was the plan originally, then let's stick to that.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
We never get dirty old minutes for dinner.
I need it today, I made like three pieces of cheese and some nuts.
Who's feeding us tonight?
We're still on air, I think.
Cha-cha.
Thought we adjourned, but.
We're adjourned?
Now we are.
Maybe?
I hope so.
Everybody's gotten up.